Mr. Oilers turn to do the pledge as well as the invocation. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow with me. Heavenly Father, we come to you asking for your blessing and help as we are gathered together. We pray for guidance in the matters of hand and ask that you clearly show us how to conduct our work with a spirit of joy and enthusiasm. Give us the desire to find ways to excel in our work. Help us to work together and encourage each other to be excellent. Be with our first responders to keep them safe. We ask all of this in the name of our Lord Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
And approval of minutes. Any changes? I didn't see any. Any other commissioners? No changes. They'll stand approved as presented. Public comment. This is a time in the meeting where we have public comment. This is for any item that's not on the agenda, for anybody to come forward and speak to the commission. We give you five minutes. And please state your name when you do come forward for the record. Item number six.
Mayor and Commissioners, item 6A, the governing body is asked to consider and approve allowing the mayor to proclaim the month of September 2021 as Buffalo Dunes Golf Course Month in Garden City, Kansas.
Entertain a motion on this item?
I move to approve. The proclamation is presented.
Second.
There has been a motion and a second. Any other discussion on this item? None being all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed. Sign it right quick, and I will read it. The proclamation reads, whereas Buffalo Dunes Golf Course was established in Finney County in 1976 and has consistently been one of the best municipal golf courses in the state of Kansas. And whereas Buffalo Dunes Golf Course has recently been awarded with many accolades over the last several months for a job well done. And whereas Buffalo Dunes Golf Course was named the number eight municipal golf course in the United States according to Golf Magazine. And whereas Buffalo Dunes Golf Course was ranked as the twentieth top ten 100 value courses in the United States, the best courses you can play for $150 or less. And whereas Buffalo Dunes Course was ranked as the number two in golf's top 100 value courses in the U.S. ranked by price. And whereas the outstanding achievements by Buffalo Dunes deserves recognition and commendation of the Garden City community. And now therefore I, Roy Sessna, Mayor of the City of Garden City, Kansas, do hereby declare September 2021 as Buffalo Dunes Golf Course Month in Garden City, uh, in the city of Garden City, Kansas, and urge all residents to recognize the Buffalo Dunes Golf Course staff for their work and dedication and the members and patrons for their continued support over the years of this great facility. Signed and sealed the seventh day of September 2021, Roy Sessna, Mayor.
Mayor, I think we have the head pro Jason Hayes and Assistant Superintendent Ms. Chalkley here. You want to join them down here for a picture opportunity? And if you guys have anything to say, you're welcome to say it.
All right. Thank you very much. Congratulations. Do you don't want to say anything?
The, the, the support of the city, the citizens, patrons, just what, what we've done in the last four and a half year, five years has been fantastic. And we can have done about the support of the city itself, the citizens of Garden City. And I know it's, it's fun going to different parts of the country and saying, hey, we're gonna check this out. We're, we're very solid. We've got a great staff. Clay can be here. Unfortunately, he has a sick kiddo. But Mitch and Lauren and just on down the pipeline, it's, it's been fantastic. So thank you all for everything.
Good job. Keep up the good work.
Item 6B, the governing body is asked to consider and approve event requests from Leva Legacy Foundation for the 2021 Spirit 5K and Heart Winking Half Marathon Road Races. These requests include a waiver of fees associated with closure of public vehicle access to Lee Richardson Zoo from eight to 11 a.m. and waiver of fees associated with hanging banners on zoo fence facing, on the zoo fence facing Main Street.
This is what we've done before for this organization, correct?
I'm not sure. Is that the case?
Yes.
Okay.
I move that we approve the event request from Leva Legacy Foundation for the 2021 Spirit 5K and Heart Winking Half Marathon Road Races.
There's been a motion by Commissioner Enru. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Dick. Is there any other discussion on that item? None being all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed.
Item 7A.
And they do have some representatives that want to speak. Do you, do you guys want to come and say anything or?
It's one of the outstanding races and, I mean, it is a standout in Western Kansas. It's known far and wide. So a lot of people come here. So thank you for doing it.
Thank you for your support.
Item 7A, Public Works and Utilities Director Mearhead will share expressions of gratitude sent from the Navajo Tribal Utility Authority to recognize the city's willingness to participate in the Lighted Up Navajo Two 2020 Project.
Yes. Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. The governing body back in the fall of 2019 authorized the Garden City Electric Department to participate up in the Light Up Navajo Two 2020 Project. This is where city crews would assist in building the necessary power lines to serve homes on the, in the Navajo Nation in Arizona. These homes, these are homes that have never had electricity ever. However, when the COVID-19 virus crossed into the Navajo Nation, they were forced to cancel their 2020 Light Up Navajo Project. And as part of the CARES Act, the Navajo Nation, they were, since they were ready, we'd already had all these other utilities lined up to come in and help them because they didn't have electricity. The federal government awarded them considerable more money than what they had anticipated and allowed them to service 737 families, which has included the 330 that Garden City was going to help light up. So even though the project was canceled, the Navajo Nation and the Navajo Tribal Utility Authority wanted to thank this governing body and the City of Garden City for its willingness to help them. The Navajo Tribal Utilities Authority's General Manager, his name is Walter Hayes. He's a professional engineer. He said that Garden City and Garden City's utility exemplified public power and demonstrated people helping people, which is the foundation of the America that I know. I had the honor to meet the gentleman that said these things. And the Navajo Nation, it was the equal to the Speaker of the House from the Navajo Nation and gave us that plaque and he would like to have the bear receive that. And we have two of the foremen that's here. One of them's wearing one of the shirts that they gave the four gentlemen that was going to participate in this project. So if you would.
Sure.
It'd be nice to come take a quick picture with him.
Congratulations, guys. Good job. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Item B is just the customary notification from Cox as to their channel lineups. They're required to do that because of our franchise agreement with them, C and D or staff reports. If you've got any questions on those, we'd be happy to answer those. If not, meetings of note, you'll see in the coming days, there's some activities that you might want to take part in, most notably tomorrow's groundbreaking at the Humane Society. Later in the month, the Black Hills Energy Citizens Advisory Council. I do believe that that requires RSVPs. Is that right, Ceylan?
Yes.
If you'll do that through Ceylan, I would appreciate it. I think we're ready for item 9A. That's the appropriation ordinance. If approved, it would be ordinance number 2538-2021A.
I move to approve appropriation ordinance number 2538-2021A.
There's been a motion by Commissioner Euler. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Enru. Is there any other discussion on that item? None being all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed.
Item 10A has a scheduled public hearing time of 1:30. We'll skip that. But I would, Mayor, let you know that in four minutes, we have another public hearing time. We believe we'd have time to begin this item at least, if not finish it. Item 10B, the governing body is asked to consider and approve an ordinance rezoning from I-1 Light Industrial to C-2 General Commercial. The property at 301 South Main Street.
And that ordinance number on this?
I have approved. This would be ordinance number 2910-2021.
Thank you.
Mayor and Commissioners, we have before you a rezone at 301 South Main. The applicant Bryant Trevino is requesting to rezone the property generally located at 301 South Main Street from I-1 Light Industrial District to C-2 General Commercial District. The applicant would like to open a barber shop at this location. The barber shop would be open 7 days a week and mainly be operated in the evenings. Barber shops are currently not permitted in I-1 Light Industrial District. The property previously operated as a dog kennel, which was permitted in the I-1 Light Industrial District. The comprehensive plan categorizes this parcel as industrial, commercial, and residential, which would be consistent with the future land use map. The building has sat vacant for some time. If the reason was not approved, the building has the potential to be used under the permitted use for the current zoning district. The governing body may approve the rezone request according to the criteria in section 27.040. And your alternatives are to approve the rezone or to not approve the rezone. Staff would recommend alternative one to approve the rezone. And Mr. Trevino is here as well.
Hello.
How are you?
How are you?
Good.
Any questions? Entertain a motion on this item?
I move that we approve ordinance 2910-2021 and ordinance to approve the rezone as requested.
There's been a motion on ordinance 2910-2021. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Euler. Any other discussion on that item? None being all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I believe it's almost 1:15. Call your attention to item 12A. This is a scheduled 1:15 public hearing. For the purpose of evaluating the performance of grant number 20CB-024 and allowing for the governing body to hear questions, concerns, and comments from the public. Following the public hearing, the governing body is asked to consider and approve the closeout of grant number 20-CB-024 and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the closeout documents. Let me sign the, here we go. So the, the history of, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead. That's all right. I'm just here to have any questions.
All right. So the history of this, May 22nd, special meeting, the governing body approved the submission of an application to KDOC under the Community Development Block Grant Program for Coronavirus Funds. On July 2nd, 2020, the city received notification from the governor that the city was awarded $132,000. The CDG application proposed a grant request for economic relief to grant funds to eligible businesses in Garden City due to COVID-19. So this was different than the revolving loan program. These were outright grants. The project assisted three businesses, which resulted in the retention of 19.25 full-time equivalent jobs, of which 100% met the low to moderate income requirement of the project. The project was funded all or in part from the Kansas Department of Commerce Small Cities Community Development Grant, CB funds. All aspects of the grant will be discussed and overall written comments will be recorded and become part of the city's citizen participation plan. So again, the over, kind of high level numbers, total grant award was 132,000. We actually dispersed 74,000. There was the ability to have administrative costs tied to that. We do have an obligation, a financial obligation of $8,033.24. And we turned back 74,000, $79.40 of funds. Beneficiaries of this project were Tefila's Restaurants, doing businesses, Casa Mariachi, Pinky's Grilled Cheese Stro, Napoli's Italian Restaurant.
I'll open the public hearing at this time. Hello.
Hello. Well, I'm Fay Trent from Great Plains Development. And thank you, Mayor Sessna and the Commissioners for allowing me to be here this, this afternoon. Basically, what Matt read is what we're here to go over. I think you have the actual documents that were sent to the city for signing. I do have the originals with me. As he said, the, their businesses were to be granted, there's money for $132,000, of which we spent $74,079.40. Administration was $15,000 and that was an agreement with Great Plains Development. Plus the fees, since we did not use all the funds, Great Plains lowered their, we lowered our admin fees to $8,000. The additional $33.24 is for the public hearing notice publication. So as soon as I get that bill, I will send a final bill to the city for that total to be paid to Great Plains. I just haven't gotten the bill yet from the, from the telegram. So like I said, we will be obligating $74,079.40. And basically, I'll just open up it to the public for any questions, comments.
Anybody from the public like to comment on this? All right. None being, we'll close the public hearing at this time. Just need to entertain a motion to approve this. Is that correct?
Yeah, approving the closeout of the grant and authorizing you and the city clerk to sign the closeout documents.
Okay.
I move that you approve the closeout of grant number 20-CB-024 and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the closeout documents.
There's been a motion by Commissioner Enru. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Commissioner Dick. Is there any discussion on this item? None being all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Looks like C.
Mayor and Commissioners, item 10C, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a resolution establishing a date and time for a public hearing regarding the rural housing incentive district for Hunter's Glen Phase One. If approved, it would be resolution number 2886-2021.
Mayor and Commissioners, as required by the RHID statute, this resolution establishes a date and time for a public hearing at which a development plan and an ordinance establishing Hunter's Glen Phase One RHID will be considered. The date and time proposed in the resolution is October 19th, 2021 at 1:30 p.m. A preliminary copy of the development plan to be considered at this time is included with this memo for your review. This area has been approved by the state of Kansas to be included in the RHID program. This resolution is the second step the commission needs to establish the RHID district for Hunter's Glen Phase One. Hunter's Glen Phase One is generally located at the 3,300 block of North Third Street. This development will consist of 23 lots in which the developer, Oiko's Development Corporation, intends to build duplexes and floorplexes. The development will, will potentially recoup reimbursed expenses by year 13 of the RHID. Your alternatives are the governing body may approve the attached resolution or two, the governing body may not approve the attached resolution. Staff recommends alternative one.
Any questions? Entertain a motion on this item?
I move that we approve resolution 2886-2021.
There's been a motion to approve resolution 2886-2021. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Euler. Any discussion on this item? None being all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed.
Item 10D, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a resolution establishing a date and time for a public hearing regarding the rural housing incentive district for Sunset Terrace Phase 1A. Approved, it would be resolution number 2887-2021.
As, as required by the RHID statute, this resolution establishes a date and time for a public hearing at which development plan and ordinance establishing the Sunset Terrace Phase 1, 1A RHID will be considered. The date and time of the proposed in the resolution is October 19th, 2021 at 1:45 p.m. A preliminary copy of the development plan to be considered at this time is included with your memo for review. This area has been approved by the state of Kansas to be included in the RHID program. This resolution is the second step the commission needs to establish the RHID district for Sunset Terrace Phase 1A. Sunset Terrace Phase 1A is generally located south of Sunset Memorial Gardens on the west side of South Towns Road. This development will consist of 55 lots in which the developer, Sunset Terrace Estates LLC, intends to provide lots to build single-family homes. The development will potentially recoup the reimbursable expenses by year 13 of the RHID. Your alternatives are the governing body may approve the attached resolution or two, the governing body may not approve the attached resolution. Staff recommends alternative one.
I just had a quick question on, on the Sunset Memorial Gardens. Are we planning on, you know, I know we're extending Valid View. Are we going to extend Sunset Memorial Gardens? Will it one day up, come up against this?
They share a boundary. Mike might be able to address the, well, I can address it on the picture here. The property to the west.
Right.
And to the south is property owned by the City of Gardens.
Okay.
So that's, you know, whether or not we expand the footprint of that facility, probably not anytime soon. But as of now, we own that, you know, an area four times larger.
Okay. I would, I'd move that we approve resolution number 2887-2021.
There's been a motion by Commissioner Enru. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Euler. Any discussion on that? None being all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Like to now move to the next item that doesn't have a scheduled time, which would be 12C. The governing body is asked to consider and approve authorizing the mayor to sign an engagement letter with Louis Hooper and Dick LLC to perform financial auditing services for the City of Garden City for years ending December 31st, 2021 through 2023. The city's current engagement letter with Louis Hooper and Dick LLC expired with the conclusion of the most recent audit. Louis Hooper and Dick has provided auditing service, auditing services for decades and is considered the premier local government auditing firm in Western Kansas. The fee for auditing services expected not to exceed $109,150 for the 2021 audit, but an increase not exceeding 3% for the year 2022 and 2023. Your alternatives are to authorize the engagement letter for auditing services or not, and then authorize staff to request qualifications from vendors.
Entertain a motion on this item?
I move to authorize the mayor to sign the engagement letter for auditing services with Louis Hooper and Dick LLC.
There's been a motion by Commissioner Euler. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Dick. Any discussion on this item? None. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed.
Item D, the governing body is asked to consider a request from Patriot Land Development LLC to extend city water.
Hi, Fred.
To the proposed Country Acres Development located outside the corporate limits of the city, of the city of Garden City. Yeah. Fred?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Patriot Land Development LLC has submitted a preliminary plat to establish a subdivision outside the corporate limits of the City of Garden City. The 109.11 acre tract is situated southeast of the Mary Street Farmland Road Intersections in the northwest quarter of Section 11, Track 24, Range 32 West. And that excludes some other existing subdivisions that are in that neighborhood. The development will consist primarily of one acre lots, with the exception of two lots that will be at 1.8 and 2.4 acres each. The subdivision consists of 23 lots slated for development in the first phase with full buildout. The preliminary plat indicates 84 total lots. Average residential household use in Garden City over the last five years has been 138,362,000 gallons per year. And the estimated impact to the city water supply to provide water service to the development is approximately 11.6 million gallons per year. The developer has not requested an extension of sewer service to the development. If this request is approved, the water utility will work with professional engineering consultants, PEC, to incorporate the development into the city water model and provide direction regarding the required improvements to the distribution system to provide service to Country Acres Development. After PEC completes their preliminary process, water utility staff will work with the developer to draft a development agreement outlining the proposed improvements required to provide service to this subdivision and present that agreement to the governing body for approval at a future city commission meeting. The developer is required to pay for the improvements necessary to extend service to the proposed subdivision. Alternatives available for the governing body to consider is to direct staff to engage PEC to provide recommendations for infrastructure improvements necessary to extend water service to the Country Acres subdivision. You can also deny the request to extend city water utility to the subdivision, or you could direct us to come up with an alternate solution. We recommend staff, we recommend alternative one, directing the water utility to work with PEC to provide recommendations for infrastructure improvements necessary to extend water service to the Country Acres subdivision. The engineering modeling expense will not exceed $4,000 and would be funded from the Water and Wastewater Fund Engineering Line Item. That fund balance is included for your reference.
Any questions? Entertain a motion on this item?
I move to direct staff to engage with professional engineering consultants to provide recommendations for infrastructure improvements necessary to extend water service to the Country Acres subdivision.
There's been a motion by Commissioner Dick. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Enru. Any discussion on this item?
So let me just understand. So the $4,000 that they will actually reimburse that amount? Or is that the amount that we are required to pay? I wasn't.
That'd be reimbursable as part of the project.
Okay. Okay.
Any other questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed.
Thank you.
Thank you. We do have a 1:30. It's like almost 1:30, so. Go back to item 10A.
Item A, Mayor and Commissioners, this is the public hearing on the matter of the governing body hearing questions, concerns, and comments from the public with regard to levy a property tax rate exceeding the revenue, revenue neutral rate. Following the public hearing, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a resolution to levy a property tax rate exceeding the revenue neutral rate. a resolution to levy a property tax rate exceeding the revenue-neutral rate. If approved, this would be Resolution number twenty-eight eighty-eight dash twenty-two-one. Melinda?
Good afternoon. At the July sixth, twenty-twenty-one city commission meeting, the governing body authorized the mayor to sign the indication of revenue-neutral rate intent to exceed the calculated revenue-neutral rate. The twenty-twenty-two city budget was approved for publication at the August sixteenth, twenty-twenty-one meeting, approving a thirty-eight-point-five-six-two mill levy rate. The revenue-neutral rate for twenty-twenty-two is thirty-seven-point-four-five-three. This resolution formally acknowledges that the city is exceeding the revenue-neutral rate calculation.
I'll open the public hearing on this. Are there any questions from the public on this item? None being, I'll close the public hearing then.
So the alternatives is the governing body may approve the resolution as presented, or you may not approve the resolution and lower the city mill levy to equal the revenue-neutral rate. Staff recommends approval of the resolution as presented.
Any questions for Melinda?
Yeah, what is our current rate? I was going to look at that before I came and I forgot. Our current mill levy rate is it-
Thirty-eight-point-five-six-two. That is the same as the twenty-twenty-one.
Right, that's right. So we're not really increasing our mill levy at all, just so the public knows. It's just because of this new way of calculating from the state, we're required to give notice so that people understand that this is what they calculated and we're asking for something that we currently are charging.
Right.
Entertain a motion on this item.
I move to approve Resolution twenty-eight eighty-eight dash twenty-two-one, a resolution of the city of Garden City, Kansas, to levy a property tax rate exceeding the revenue-neutral rate.
There's been a motion by Commissioner Dick, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Euler, any other discussion on this item? None being, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed.
I just wanted to let you know, next year, once everybody turns in their indication, there will be a publication that goes out to all citizens in Garden City by mail, and it will show all of the mill levy rates for the taxing entities in Garden City, in Fannie County. Okay.
Thank you.
I think we're ready for item twelve E.
That's a lot of jumping around.
The governing body is asked to consider and approve a contractual agreement with Kirkham, Michael, and Associates, Inc. for biennial city bridge inspection as required by the Federal Highway Administration. Mike?
Yes, good afternoon again. The Federal Highway Administration through the Kansas Department of Transportation requires that all bridge structures be field inspected for any change in condition from the last time they were inspected. The city of Garden City has ten bridges that require these inspections. Kirkham, Michael, and Associates have performed these inspections in the past for the city, and their inspections have met all of the Federal Highway Administration's requirements. The inspections are due to be performed in November of twenty-twenty-one, and Kirkham, Michael, and Associates have proposed to complete the inspections for a fee of two hundred dollars per bridge, or for a total of two thousand dollars. Your alternatives would be to approve the contract for two thousand dollars for the bridge inspection with Kirkham, Michael, and Associates, or to not approve the contract and direct staff to find an alternate inspection firm. Staff recommends number one, and the funding would come from the street department's repair and equipment code, which currently has a balance of fifty-seven thousand, one ninety-one, fifty-two. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions, entertain a motion on this item.
I move to approve the contract with Kirkham, Michael, and Associates for two thousand dollars for bridge inspection.
There's been a motion by Commissioner Euler, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Enru, is there any other discussion on this item? None being, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Item F, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a request from Eric Smith LLC to purchase one acre of city property on North Jenny Barker Road. Mike?
Yes, Mr. Eric Smith, he's the owner of a one-acre tract. When that map comes up, I'll show you, located on Jenny Barker Road. He inquired with the, with staff, he called, he called my office to see if the governing body would be interested in considering selling him one acre of city property that is, that's adjacent to his lot. He would like to develop this property, and he told me that it was a franchise restaurant that he would be looking for, and he needs additional space for parking. He also told me that, just in a phone call this morning, that if the city was interested in selling more of that land along Jenny Barker Road, he'd be interested in purchasing that and developing it as well. The city does own approximately twenty-six acres of property, including the current utility service center location, which is at one-forty Harvest Street. That makes up eleven-point-one-seven acres of land, and then the additional fifteen-point-seven-five acres adjacent to the utility service center was acquired for a future combined public works facility. The governing body authorized a space needs assessment for this combined public works facility, and that work was started in May of twenty-twenty-one, and is about ninety-five percent completed. I should have that final report within the next, hopefully for your next meeting. Anyway, the preliminary report is that this, that the property required for a new combination public works facility would be twenty-six-point-nine-two acres. So basically, the, what was proposed just fits within the city property there. And the blue corner that's marked out there, that's the part that Mr. Smith currently owns. The green is what the city owns, and then the black hashed mark area is one acre of land that would be just north of his property, and that was his initial request. But like I said today, he was interested in anything that the city may be interested in selling for his development. I advised him, and of course, that if the governing body wants to sell this one-acre piece of property, then staff would proceed with the necessary appraisal. We'd have to advertise the sale of the property and accept bids for the property, and the bid results would be brought back to the governing body for consideration at a later date, should you choose to go that way. The alternatives would be to direct staff to advise Eric Smith LLC that staff will work with legal counsel and start the process of selling one acre of city property located on North Jenny Barker Road to the highest bidder. Or number two is direct staff to advise Mr. Eric Smith LLC that the governing body is not in favor of selling this portion of the property located on Jenny Barker Road at this time. Staff has no recommendation. The fiscal note is we estimate it would cost somewhere around twenty-five-hundred dollars to prepare the necessary appraisals and legal documents to get ready to put this property out for bid. So you choose, you know, if you choose to tell us to go in that direction. I'm happy to answer any questions if I can. Mr. Smith wanted to be here, but he was tied up today and asked me to convey those messages, which I did, so.
Was he, Mike, was he interested in selling, selling us his one-acre property so that we have? Because right now you said that we are just, right now, meeting the space requirements that we anticipate. Is that correct?
That is correct. That's what they're, that's what the space needs assessment is showing. Commissioner, I did not ask him if he was interested in selling his one-acre. I could certainly follow up with that if you request that.
Well, so selling this one acre would reduce our, basically would cut into the amount we already need, is that correct?
Yes, if we sold him additional, then it would be cutting ours short.
I know we asked him before, and he wasn't interested in selling that one acre, I know, to us.
I knew he talked about that, but yeah.
Any other questions? Entertain a motion on this item.
Yeah, I would direct staff to advise Eric Smith LLC that the governing body is not in favor of selling a portion of the city's property located on North Jenny Barker Road at this time.
There's been a motion by Commissioner Enru to not in favor of selling the property at this time. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Euler, any other discussion on this item? None being, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Item G, the governing body is asked to consider and approve entering into a contract agreement with Confluence for one-hundred-and-forty-nine-thousand-five-hundred dollars for parcel recreation master planning. Aaron?
Afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. So, a long time ago, we started talking about parcel rec master planning, and we have, this summer, created some delays for us in the contract negotiation, but we've gotten through that, and this is the final presentation to you. The total amount is for one-forty-nine-five-hundred, and that includes the update of the zoo master plan that would be paid for from Friends of Lee Richardson Zoo. Why that's important is they do need to do an update for their accreditation. So Friends was really, that's one of the items we initially talked about cutting out, and they would do that at another time. But Friends really wanted to see that get done. That includes a strategic plan with that. Up there is kind of everything that we've talked about before. So this is going to be a management plan, a program, study of programs. They're going to do a statistically valid survey, public engagement to drive this plan, with the idea that it's going to tentatively lay out our next ten years of operations and program, and where to seek funding, and what capital items that the public would like to see out of parcel recreation. So I'd be happy to answer any questions about that if anything's unclear.
What was the things that were cut out to get down to this point?
Really, the biggest piece that cost the most was what they call site-specific plans. It's still included in the contract, however, it's, it would be delivered on an as-needed basis. So if we identified how to this plan hypothetically, I'm just going to throw one out there, People's Complex, we could then task them to do that site-specific plan with a cost estimating and all that, and that price is in the contract. And I want to say it's just under seven thousand per site, up to three sites. So that was a good twenty thousand of it. Part of what we also did is eighty-four-hundred in travel to get here, so we asked them to consolidate that, maybe not make as many trips, but let's be, have staff here help them be efficient and meet with more groups when they're here that cuts down on travel, things like that. So as far as getting out and, you know, getting things organized for public engagement.
So I'm curious, Aaron, so that, you know, we spent a lot of money with them to kind of design and do our new Garden Rapids at the big pool. And I'm curious, are they going to be able to capitalize any of that work? And if they are, did that help offset some of the cost of this?
Well, I'm hoping what they can capitalize on is they learned where, where to go to get public engagement, where not to, so they don't have to start that from scratch. From what I understand, in the process with the pool, that would have been pretty specific to the pool, and this is looking at a much more broad view of both facilities, programs, service areas, market share, that kind of thing. That would be more broad than what they did specifically for an aquatic facility. But like I said, hopefully they learned how to get the public engaged out of that, which will help us move quickly.
And what's their timeline? I-
Six months with the intent to hopefully do a final presentation to the governing body sometime of April of next year. That's, I mean, again, that's tentative, so.
Any other questions? Entertain a motion on this item.
I move to approve the contract with Confluence for one-hundred-and-forty-nine-thousand-five-hundred dollars and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement.
There's been a motion by Commissioner Euler, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Dick, any other discussion on this item?
I will say that I was on the selection committee that kind of looked at all these, and the Confluence did do a very good job, and especially what they will bring on the zoo side is something that no other forum really could do. So it looked like you're a good choice.
Excellent. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed. We do have a one-forty-five, and we're currently at one-forty-four and twenty seconds, so if we go slowly, we can get it to the one-forty-five here.
Mayor and Commissioners, the one-forty-five public hearing is for the purpose of the governing body hearing questions, concerns, and comments from the public with regard to the proposed twenty-twenty-two budget for the city of Garden City. Following the public hearing, the governing body is asked to consider and approve the authorization of the twenty-twenty-two budget certificate, which summarizes the maximum levy of property tax for specific funds and the maximum expenditure for all funds of the city's budget. Melinda?
The certificate for the twenty-twenty-two budget was prepared using the notice of hearing for the twenty-twenty-two budget expenditures. Prior to this budget hearing, the governing body approved a resolution to exceed the revenue-neutral rate. This allows the city to levy a property tax rate at thirty-eight-point-five-six-two mills that will generate approximately eight million, six-hundred-and-fifty-five-thousand, and fifty-one dollars. Is the hearing open?
I'll open the hearing at this time. Any public comment about the budget? I'll close the hearing at this time then.
So the alternatives that you have, you can, the proposed budget will not result in raising the mill levy overall. Those changes will also change the certificate if you decide to lower the mill levy rate. So as presented or not?
Any questions for Melinda? Entertain a motion on this item.
I move to approve the certificate of budget as presented.
There was a motion by Commissioner Dick, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Enru, any other discussion on this item? None being, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Melinda. Item H, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a contract between the city and Pennegar Smith and Associates, Inc. for governmental affairs and legislative monitoring services for twenty-twenty-two.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. This is, not the first time you've seen this before. We have been working with Pennegar Smith and Associates since twenty-fifteen. They do a very nice job, they were just out here, as most of you are aware, for the SKC, which is separate, but we use them for those services as well. This is actually approval to use them in twenty-twenty-two for the city. Services does include the electric stuff that we do as well, and the price for that is twenty-six thousand, seventy-five dollars with reimbursement, with reimbursement for expenditures, not to exceed the five hundred dollars without prior approval. So this is, there's no other changes from our previous contract. They typically don't make a lot of changes from year to year, and if they do, we usually discuss those previous to putting this before you. So your option is to approve this agreement with them again for twenty-twenty-two, or to deny and ask us to go through probably an RFP or our few processes to look for someone else.
Any questions for Jennifer?
I just wondered, will they be at the October, at the League of Municipalities? Are they generally there? I can't remember.
Um-
I don't believe so.
Okay.
I mean, they're located in-
To be good. Right, that's fine.
Yeah.
They don't, they don't have time to talk.
Any other questions? Entertain a motion on this item.
I move that we approve the contract between the city and Pennegar, Smith, and Associates for the governmental affairs and legislative monitoring services for twenty-twenty-two.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's been a second, any discussion on this item? None being, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed.
Next set of items all relate to the American Rescue Plan Act and the dispersment of year-one funds. I'll read the background for this preliminary one, and then probably skip reading you the same background for the next, the next few. You're asked to consider and approve distributing American Rescue Plan Act funds for, first, the city of Garden City's general fund. The American Rescue Plan Act provides for the following uses in the following funding categories: supporting the public health response, addressing the negative economic impacts caused by the public health emergency, serving the hardest-hit communities and families, replacing lost public sector revenue, providing premium pay for essential workers, investing in water and sewer infrastructure, investing in broadband infrastructure. Based on opportunities within the organization and those identified outside the organization through commission workshop discussions and preliminary solicitation by community stakeholders, the city commission approved the following plan for the distribution of funds in the first year, and that's shown on the- first year, and that's shown on the screen and in your packet. Before the governing body, this agenda item is consideration of the distribution of funds within the replacing lost public sector revenue focus area. Based on the formula provided by the federal government, the requested distribution for one million, thirty thousand to the city's general fund. This amount is anticipated in the twenty-twenty-two city budget is currently drafted and is just approved by you. Alternatives are to approve the distribution of ARPA funds in the amount of a million, thirty to the city's general fund, to approve a distribution in a different amount to the city's general fund, or not to approve the distribution of ARPA funds to the city's general fund. Our recommendation is alternative one.
Any questions for Matt on this item? None being, entertain a motion on this item.
I move to approve distribution of ARPA funds to the amount of one million, thirty thousand to the city general fund.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Commissioner Euler, any discussion on this item? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed.
Item J, the governing body is asked to consider and approve distributing American Rescue Plan Act funds to Garden City Community College. So before the governing body, this agenda item is consideration of the distribution of funds within the small business and work development partnerships focus area. The funding will support Garden City Community College's endeavor to combine education and on-the-job training, as well as accelerating the ability to rehire those adversely impacted in the workplace by the pandemic. Now, the proposed amount of funding is one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. In your packet is a letter from Dr. Ryan Ruda regarding their intents, intentions for use of the funds. Dr. Ruda is also here today and available to answer questions that you might have.
Would you like to speak on this, Dr. Ruda?
Only if there's one.
Okay. Do we have any questions?
Well, I have a question. So I, you know, I love that we, that these dollars are available and the work that you do at Garden City Community College. I'm just curious about how you might report back and just let us know. You know, I appreciate the Finney County Economic Development meetings, and they often talk about the work they do in partnership with you, but I was wondering if there would be a possibility that you report back to the use of the funds and how they're impacting not only the workforce development, but also our community.
Yeah, absolutely. I think on the accountability and the transparency side, I think those are, those are elements that are crucial. So happy to be able to report back. You know, I think the intent of this is really to be able to help continually meet the needs of industry, and so we'd be happy to report back on that end.
That'd be great.
Any other questions? Entertain a motion on this item, then.
I have a motion that we approve the distribution of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in ARPA funding to the Garden City Community College.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
Go ahead.
A second.
Second by Commissioner Dick. Any other discussion on this item? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed. Thank you, Dr. Ruda.
Thank you.
Item K, the governing body is asked to consider and approve distributing American Rescue Plan Act funding to Downtown Vision, Inc. Before the governing body, this agenda item is consideration of the distribution of funds within the small business and workforce development partnerships focus area. Specifically, these funds would be distributed to Downtown Vision, Inc. in order to establish parklets in the downtown area with outdoor seating to accommodate indoor distancing restrictions that could come about as a result of either state or local laws during a pandemic or due to an increased public desire to avoid being in close proximity to others indoors. The distribution, as proposed, is in the amount of fifty thousand dollars.
Any questions on this one? Entertain a motion on this item.
I move to approve the distribution of ARPA funds at Downtown Vision Incorporated for the amount of fifty thousand dollars.
There's been a motion by Commissioner Dick. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Euler. Any other discussion on this item? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed. Be it noted that Commissioner Dick will be stepping down from the bench on this item.
Item L, the governing body is asked to consider and approve distributing American Rescue Plan Act funding to Great Plains Maker Space. Before the governing body, this agenda item is consideration of the distribution of funds within the small business and workforce development partnerships focus area. Specifically, these funds would be distributed to Great Makers, Great Plains Maker Space, and a five-oh-one-C-three organization promotes do-it-yourself innovation, entrepreneurship, and technical knowledge in southwest Kansas. The distribution, as proposed, is in the amount of fifty thousand dollars.
Any questions on this item?
Yeah, my only comment is, is that, again, that idea of making sure that we know how the funds are used, just out of accountability, and also just the, I mean, I'd like to hear how they are really maximizing and using these funds in an innovative way. So I think, other than I, I have no questions or just a comment.
Yeah, my question was just, how are they going to use the funds? It wasn't real clear in their proposal.
Okay.
Want to speak on the, out in the organization?
It just.
Okay. Maybe when they report back to us.
Maybe in the report, yeah.
They could give us an update on what they use the funds for.
Right.
Entertain a motion on this item, then.
I'll move that we approve the fifty thousand dollars for the, in the American Rescue Plan Act funding to Great Plains Maker Space.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. By Commissioner Euler. Any other discussion on this item? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed.
Item M, the governing body is asked to consider and approve distributing American Rescue Plan Act funds to the Finney County Child Care and Early Learning Network. In this focus area, okay, in this, in this agenda item, consideration of the distribution of funds within the childcare and early learning focus area, the proposal is to distribute six hundred thousand dollars to the Finney County Child Care and Early Learning Network for the purpose of creating additional childcare and early learning capacity within Finney County. This local nonprofit organization seeks to develop multiple facilities to meet the unmet demand for childcare and early learning spots.
Any questions on this item?
Sorry, my agenda items still coming. I think they outlined how they were going to use the funds, and I can't remember now, but.
Entertain a motion on this item, then.
I move that we approve the six hundred thousand dollars to the American Rescue Act funds to the Finney County Child Care and Early Learning Network.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There was a second by Commissioner Euler. Any other discussion on this item? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed.
Item N, the governing body is asked to consider and approve two appointments to fill vacant seats on the cultural relations board. Funny? Okay, I'll present it then. The cultural relations board has two vacant positions. With the first term ending in December of twenty-twenty-one and the second ending in December of twenty-twenty-three, the board has another position getting ready to be opened in December twenty-twenty-one that is currently filled. The cultural relations board has received three applications: Halima Farah, Elda Zapien, and Mary Buckman for consideration. Halima and Elda are being recommended for the cultural relations board due to needing more ethnic diversity within the board. Mary Buckman is being, Mary Buckman being recommended for the position getting ready to expire in twenty-twenty-one. So your alternatives are to appoint Elda Zapien for the vacant position ending in December twenty-twenty-one, and Halima Farah for the vacant position that expires December twenty-twenty-three, or to not make those appointments.
Entertain a motion on this item.
I move to appoint Elda Zapien for the vacant position ending December twenty-twenty-one and appoint Halima Farah for the vacant position that expires December twenty-twenty-three.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. Any other discussion on this item? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed.
Item O, the golf, or the governing body is asked to consider and approve an appointment to the golf advisory board. The golf, oh, okay.
Jason's here.
He's almost here.
Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners. We currently have one opening on the golf advisory board. We had an applicant, Hunter Carson, that submitted back in January, I believe. He will be replacing a Walter Burke, who has some health concerns and had to step down. Our recommendation is to approve Hunter Carson for the opening position for the three-year term. Other alternatives are make another recommendation to the golf advisory board, or table at this time, staff recommends appointing Hunter Carson.
Any questions on this item? Entertain a motion, then, for this item.
I move that we appoint Hunter Carson to the golf advisory board.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Euler. Any other discussion on this item? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item P is the consent agenda. It's one item, so. Appropriate motion would be consent agenda item P one, or we can pull it off and talk about it separately.
I move to approve the consent agenda item P one.
There's been a motion. Is there a second? I'll second that motion. Any discussion on that item? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed. No other business, it looks like, on the agenda? Commissioner reports? Commissioner Euler?
Yeah, I had a citizen email me about, complaining about Mary Street from Highway eighty-three to VFW Road, saying that the road is a little bit washboarded, and she had some concerns, and so I talked to Mike a little bit about that.
Yes, Commissioner, we have looked at that portion of West Mary Street, and it is extremely rough in spots. We checked with the local contractors that could, if they were available, if we had the funding to go do that this fall, but we can't. It would run us clear into the late November timeframe, and the concern would be is we'd get it tore up, and we'd never get it put back together before springtime. So the intent of staff is to bring to the city manager a list of several streets that also need to be milled and possibly overlaid, and bring that to you in the spring for consideration at that time. But, you know, we don't have a big enough piece of equipment where we could mill that off ourselves, and we do agree it's, it's rough, but there's several places like that.
Thanks, I appreciate that. I'll let them know.
Okay.
Thank you for doing that. I also, when I was looking at the master activity report from the police department, I noticed that car break-ins are like up, like a hundred and three percent, and I'm assuming that a lot of that is just due to people just not leaving their, locking their vehicles, or just leaving items out for people to see, or, I mean.
Good afternoon.
Hello, Chief.
Yes, you're correct. So probably ninety-nine percent of our car break-ins are unlocked vehicles. Very hard for us to be proactive on that, unfortunately. I wish we could go around and lock people's cars more, but that would.
Might get trouble for that.
Yeah, not be the right thing.
Right.
So we ask that, we try to push out on social media, you know, at nine o'clock, go out, check your car, make sure that it's locked up, windows are rolled up, you don't leave anything of value in the car, so, and then patrol as much as we can at night.
Yeah, I just found that interesting, and I thought, well, that had to be it, so.
Yes.
All right, well, we'll do what we can, I guess, to tell people to lock their cars, and.
Any help would be appreciated.
All right, thanks for that. And also, congratulations to Buffalo Dunes. I did have a chance to go around with Jason to see some of the improvements that have been made, and it really is impressive. I am not a golfer. I know how to put on golf tournaments, and so, like, a lot of the, a lot of the questions that I ask are just simple questions. I mean, so I just appreciate you taking, you know, the time to do all of that, and congratulations to everybody for that. I was also excited to see that Leave a Legacy is just getting bigger and bigger, the fact that they're adding the half marathon. That's huge. I mean, to have a race that, you know, in this area, it's a thousand people, I mean, that's, it's just kind of impressive to see that race grow, and, you know, especially for what they stand for. And then finally, I just wanted to thank the electric department. I mean, in addition to, you know, the Light Up Navajo Project, just the fact that on Food Truck Fridays, all of the work that they do in preparation for that is phenomenal, and it's just really impressive, and they do it without complaining, and, at least not publicly, and, and it's just, I just love seeing that private-public partnership, so, thank you. That's all I have.
Commissioner Dick?
Great, thanks to Stuart and Jennifer for the pre-meeting and taking a tour of the municipal court. It looks like it's coming out really well, and it was good to get a background refresher on everything that's gone the last twenty years in that. Congratulations Jason and team for the accolades that they've got with Buffalo Dunes, and well-deserved. Glad to see that we keep on going with that legacy. And then also, just keep in mind, as we start to, and it's crazy to say, start to get into the holiday season, and I'm saying that because Nonprofit Fair was this last weekend, put on by Western Kansas Community Foundation, and so it looked like it was a good turnout there, but start to think about some of those organizations that typically support at the end of the year through match day. It sounds like this is going to be one of the biggest match days ever for Western Kansas Community Foundation, and that really goes to keep those local dollars in town and go into organizations that otherwise might not be able to function without those donations. So keep those in mind. That's all I got.
All right. Commissioner Andrew?
Well, so I want to say thank you first for KDOT opening up the bridge at Main Street. I almost got used to never going that way, and so when I heard, when I saw on social media that was open, I was extremely excited, and so that makes it so much easier just to get out to Buffalo Dunes. It's no more the, the road trek or the road race around everywhere else. I do want to mention also, I know that they, KDOT is getting ready to improve the highway, and then so the Buffalo Dunes entrance will be impacted, so hopefully we, as a city, are really making sure that we make the most out of those changes as they're coming up, because we definitely don't want them to close our entrance and maybe make our entrance even better than it is now. I also want to say thank you to Leave a Legacy. It's been a, it's been, the cause that they serve, you know, for cancer patients in our area, and the things that they do, the race is just one way to bring a lot of attention. But it's really the, the whole purpose of the race is to raise funds for people who are in desperate times, and so if you've ever battled cancer, if you know people who battle cancer, I'm going to tell you, it's a scary time, and the things that the, Leave a Legacy dollars do for those, those families and those people make a huge difference and impact. It just says that we really care about you, and that these things are really important. So I just want to say thank you. I am not going to do the half marathon. I don't care how, people have tried to shame me into it, I'm not, I really love the five K. It's really good. So any commissioner wants to join me, I'd love to see you there, so. I do, I just want to thank just the whole city, city and city staff about keeping the mill levy level and keeping it just constant. You know, it's a lot of work to put the budget together. This year, it seems more work than ever. It seems like we've been talking about budget, I can't even remember when we started, but it seems, we've talked about budget almost every single meeting, so that we're able to keep it stable and really make the most out of the dollars that our citizens really provide for us, and to make sure that we continue the level of services that we can in our city is really excellent. A lot of people are very excited about fall cleanup. I've had several questions about that. I think it happens in October, but don't quote me, so I'm not really sure on that. I do want to say also, the railroad crossing, when Commissioner Euler mentioned the Mary Street and VFW, that railroad crossing, I don't know if they will do anything, but that is one of those places that you slow to a crawl in order not to get your car, you know, all bounced around. So that's something, hopefully when you're looking at that, if the railroad would help us make some improvements at that also. Last thing I want to do is just say, talk, say how appreciative of our social media efforts from the Garden City Police Department, all the way through the Communications Department. People know more about our city through social media. Now, I don't want to say you have to spend a lot of time on Facebook, but the information that you receive, even the updates about the pool, what's open, what's not open, is really important, and it makes, the more communication that we can have really makes the difference. And so I just want to say thank you in advance to all of those departments who are using our social media efforts to really keep people informed. It really seems to be working, and there's a lot of positive comments, and so I just wanted to say thank you for all of that work. That's it.
That's it, all right. Just like to thank the staff for the great pre-meeting and the tour this morning. Great to see the progress on the new municipal court and evidence area. It's great to see walls and everything going up. It's going to be a fabulous facility and really help out our, our law enforcement staff in getting more space, needed space. I also want to congratulate Buffalo Dunes. I hope everybody goes out and supports the Dunes. It's another one of those great jewels that we have in our crown here in Garden City. Not only Buffalo Dunes, but the zoo, as well as other departments that we have, that really makes Garden City a great place to.
That really makes Garden City a great place to live, work, and definitely raise a family. Other than that, that's all I've got. I'll call this meeting adjourned. We don't have anything else.